Observe a moment of silence and I will lead you in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. We want to welcome all of you in attendance tonight as well as those that might be watching on Cable TV 7 for tonight's meeting. The next item is the consent agenda, but there are items that need to be pulled. Seeing none, I would accept a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second?
Roll call.
Councilman Lauer?
Aye.
Councilman Reed?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Shaver?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Counselman Solon?
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
Next, we have a public hearing on the community block, community development block grant amendments.
Your honor, for this public hearing, we have one exhibit to offer and that includes a city council information form from Scott Allen, Director of Community Development, with attachments, possible CDBG sidewalk projects and CDBG project funding spreadsheet and affidavit publication as advertised in Blue Springs Examiner of December 19th, 2009. These are all the exhibits I have to offer on this particular hearing.
Okay, Mr. Allen.
Thank you, your honor, and members of the council. Again, before this evening is a request to make amendments to the last three annual action plans for the community development block grant. As you know, community development block grant through Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD, has been a part of Blue Springs since we became an official entitlement community back in 2006. So we're looking at three years' worth of annual action plans, '06, '07, '07, '08, and '08, '09. During that time, the city has utilized over $621,000 in CDBG funds for projects, the focus of which have been on providing new infrastructure to the downtown area, the core of the city. Those have included, as you know, sidewalks, intersection improvements, street lighting on Main Street, and other such enhancements. During the period in question here, the cost of publications, training, staff time, and supplies have been covered by the city's general fund and has been supported by one staff person, Mike Peterman, our principal planner, and the community development department. This request is to reallocate $68,123 in previously approved CDBG funds, subject to your approval. Again, staff is proposing to close out those program years with the remaining funds totaling $68,000 by recouping some of the administrative costs associated with managing this newer grant program. This includes just over $18,000, or just over 3% of the total CDBG allotment to program administration, so just over $18,000 of the $68,000. And again, if these funds are not accounted for, they could be forfeited back to the federal government. Included within that $18,000 for program administration would also be administrative funds for a regional analysis of impediments prepared by Kansas City, Missouri, and eight other communities in the metro area. Financial commitment for that would be between $2,500 and $3,500. The analysis of impediments is a HUD-required document that analyzes the impediments, so does exactly what it says, to fair housing choice in the city and also in the region through this more regional effort. All but one of the previously approved projects have been completed and they've come under budget, hence we have the remaining $68,000 in unallocated funds. The project known as 10th Street Sidewalks, Vesper to B Street, was surveyed but never started due to a lack of willingness from adjacent property owners in the area to grant easements to construct sidewalks along their property. So a decision on how to proceed with this project or reallocation of these funds to a new project is also suggested. So with that, there are other possible projects that have been considered in previous discussions with those annual action plans. Those are provided on page two of the council information form. I can get into those more specifically if there are questions as such, but here's a Number one is, would be sidewalks along Mach Avenue from essentially its current connection to South Outer Road and then all the way west towards 15th Street. Number two is A Street sidewalk. And number three would be intersection improvements like you see at 11th and 12th Streets on Main Street, but continuing east right at the corner at City Hall, 10th and Main. So those are just some suggestions for that approximately $50,000 of remaining funds that would be not, that would not be directed towards administrative costs. So with that, again, this is a required public hearing to amend those three annual action plans. Staff is requesting that city council consider the request for moving those $18,000 to program administration and then take the remaining $50,000 and consider one of the three projects above or any other projects that may be under consideration, not previously discussed. So with that, again, a resolution has been prepared to modify, excuse me, to modify or amend those three annual action plans and lay out the $18,000 or so to administrative costs and then the remaining to other program or project costs as you see fit. So again, not all three annual action plans need to be modified tonight. The first two, '06, '07, and '07, '08, would take into account that $18,000 and a full modification of the '08, '09 where that 10th Street sidewalk is under consideration does not necessarily need to be modified tonight. So just wanted to set that up for discussion. Not all three need to be modified tonight, but that's the preference of staff to do so, so we do not need to come back and do additional amendment at a later time. But regardless, this serves as a public hearing for any and all of those amendments.
Are there any questions? Mr. Allen?
Your honor? Mr. Allen, could you explain the logic or why you came up with the number two choice on your suggested projects, the A Street project?
That was identified with the current, the '09 and '10 program year. That was on the list of possible sidewalk projects and it's simply to allow connection to what is now considered the future 10th Street sidewalk. Again, that portion, if I may, approximately this stretch is what has been surveyed but has not been constructed due to inability to get easements from, primarily from property owners on the east side here. So there was, there's some long-term interest in completing a sidewalk there to connect some of these east-west connections to what is now a major sidewalk spine running north-south through the downtown.
Okay. My issue, I guess, would be in questioning that is that that is a dead-end street.
It is cul-de-sac, yes.
And I would think we'd better use of some of this money to try to connect some of the through streets where there's more likely to have a little bit more pedestrian traffic.
Sure.
So my feelings would be maybe lower that in a hierarchy of order out there and try to go with some of those that are more of the through streets and use those.
Okay. That's certainly understandable and I think looking at HUD's kind of program elements for constructing sidewalks, they're looking at just serving the underserved neighborhoods, through streets, cul-de-sacs, short stub streets.
Right.
It's, in their estimation, they're all equally valuable for being served with those sidewalks, so that's why. In terms of their hierarchy, it still fits within that, but it's certainly understand in terms of what's the low-hanging fruit, trying to get some connections through downtown.
Right, and I understand the money towards a project and if we can roll that maybe over into another year and apply it to a project, that maybe that little bit will help push it all the way through, might be a better use of that funds.
That's possible. And again, I just, this is another map, just for reference, this is the map that was discussed with the '09, '10 proposal, I think, last summer when this was discussed. And some of these are already accounted for, the Hearns Project, 22nd, and B Street are already under, our program elements are already being constructed or under construction, so it's just the remaining that we're discussing here in terms of immediate needs for sidewalks.
Well, hopefully we'll be successful enough on the bidding on that that we'll come in with some spare money left over.
That's true. Hopefully.
That's all I have.
Any other questions? Councilman Reed?
Yes, it's just a clarification on my part and for some reason I thought all the CDBG had to be used in that designated downtown part.
It needs to be used in the low-to-moderate income census tracts, and I do have a... So essentially, the core of the city, the downtown portion, is essentially the heart of the low-mod census tracts as well, but it does include all the shaded areas that you see here.
All the shades of what?
All the shaded areas are included and eligible for HUD funding for actual projects on the ground. And one of them, as you may have seen already, is construction just this last year of Kingsridge Sidewalk up in this area.
Right, I remember that. Thank you, I told you I just needed to do that.
Any other questions?
Yes, your honor, I had a quick question. I know that the city manager, Eric Johnson, has sent me an email because we have some water issues and concerns on infrastructure in District 2, and I guess my question is, can we reapply or use any of the HUD funds for that kind of, I know we can't use it for repairing, but if we could use it for new infrastructure regarding water retention and water issues in District 2?
That would be a possibility. Infrastructure is, again, sidewalk, what have you, is a focus of the consolidated plan, the annual action plan we provide to HUD. And, correct, maintenance is not permitted, but new construction or reconstruction would be allowed.
That would be something I'd really like to see us look into because that's something that's really needed.
Any other questions? Seeing none, is there one in the audience who'd like to speak in support of, in support of, in opposition to? Opposition to? Seeing none, we'll close this public hearing. Is there anyone who'd like to introduce this resolution approving the CDBG amendments?
I'll introduce it, your honor.
But just need a motion to approve it.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve it.
I would second that.
Okay. Before we do that, we need some clarifications.
Okay.
Your honor, thank you. I just, you have staff report that included three recommendations and so we're asking that approximately $18,000 be reallocated back to program administration. And then I just need some clarity on that remaining $50,000. Was there a recommendation, there is a project in here, 10th and Main intersection, that is approximately $50,000. Is that going to be part of the recommendation or, I don't, I don't feel like I got enough direction from that discussion to, for staff to know what project you want us to amend to or to allocate this to.
If I may, since I did speak up on that one, I took it that staff was looking at projects one, two, and three in that prior, that kind of an order, being first, second, and third. My question was, I thought second should probably wait so that would, to me, pull that one out and you're looking at first, the one on Mach, collecting that area, that sidewalk down through there, and then possibly looking at the Main Street area.
We probably wouldn't initiate the Mach project because of the budget estimate. At this point in time, we have $50,000 that we're able to reprogram, so, and I'm looking at staff, we would probably, based on this list, look at the 10th and Main intersection because it, the budget on that project aligns very closely with what we're, with what's left in that particular CDBG year.
And I would be happy with that. I'll leave it open for anybody else.
Okay, thank you.
Great.
Your honor, I didn't quite understand, can we roll this money over or do we have to spend it?
You have to defer to Mr. Allen.
Your honor, the '06, '07, and '07, '08 should be reallocated now, and that's that $18,000. The remaining $50,000 can be deferred. In terms of rolling that over, another project still needs to be identified in order to do that, so it could be, as Councilman Edmondson stated, I would have to go back and check the HUD rules on that, but it's, it's my understanding that would be possible to roll that $50,000 into, let's say, the Mach Avenue sidewalks and then just reprogram that for next year.
I understand you could have it directed towards that and then carry it over to the next year and then additional funds from the following year towards that, but I don't think you can leave it unassigned.
Exactly.
If my understanding was correctly.
That's correct. So something, it needs to be identified for a project, but when that project occurs can be carried over up to, I believe, two years.
Okay, thank you.
So it would be, need to be spent by next year, considering '08, '09, and then next year.
Councilman Shaver?
Your honor, I need to disclose, I own several properties on this stretch of Mach, therefore I will abstain.
Okay, duly noted. Okay, staff, do we have sufficient clarification?
Well, we have some clarification.
It might not be sufficient, but we have some.
I believe we could, if it's the council's pleasure, we could proceed by identifying the Mach sidewalk improvement as a project we could begin this year, recognizing it would take additional funding in future years. Or we could proceed with 10th and Main intersection and complete that project with what is currently available. Then we would perhaps look at Mach as a future project for future consideration along with perhaps some stormwater runoff issues in District 2 as well. So it's still not completely clear to me, but we'll...
Let me ask, what's the pleasure of District 2 council members?
I just, soon we start with 10th and Main, since that's almost completed anyway, and then look for rolling it over to Mach or, I'm not too sure we wouldn't need, really need a little work session to talk about, that's a lot of money to decide where to go, just, you know.
I would agree with Councilman Reed that we go ahead and finish up the project on Main, that ties in with some of the other projects we started to kind of complete that look for helping that revitalization and then look at, again, the Mach area is a larger project to complete at one time.
Sounds like we've got concurrence for District 2. Okay. Now, we will accept a motion to approve the resolution.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close, no? Motion carries. Next, we have a presentation on the RED bond issuance update. First, we'll hear from our city administrator, Mr. Johnson, who in turn will introduce other people to speak.
Okay, thank you, your honor, and my comments will be very brief, but I did want to take just a couple of minutes to set some context. I believe everybody's had an opportunity to go through the agenda and to receive the staff reports and information that's been sent to you, but I would, for some of the members of our audience or people who might be viewing who don't have all of the history of this project, just wanted to take a couple of minutes to recap. The city council approved a TIF redevelopment plan in February of 2007. That plan was approved with RED Development. Implementation of the plan by RED Development has been occurring since that approval occurred in 2007, and there have been a number of reports and updates provided to the mayor and city council over the past few years. In the summer of 2009, the city issued a city-backed partial bond issue, issuance of $14.5 million to help keep the project moving and to reimburse the developer for a portion of approved TIF TDD expenses that were included as part of the original TIF plan. That issuance of bonds occurred with support of the city council and it allowed existing infrastructure and on- and off-site improvements to be completed in a manner that allowed several existing stores that are out there today to be opened. On November 25th, 2009, Mayor Ross received a letter from the developer requesting a second partial bond issue with a potential for up to $27 million in bonds. Due to the current bond market and lack of retail sales history for the Adams-Derry-Landing project, a city backing was also requested as part of that letter. And a second follow-up letter was subsequently submitted to the mayor and staff on December the 17th, 2009. Both of those letters are included in your council agenda packet and you have received that information previously. In early December and in response to those written requests, the developer requested a meeting with the mayor and city council and staff, and the developer facilitated some informational meetings with the mayor and council to have a better understanding of what was occurring with the project, various updates and status reports on leases that were in progress or had been completed. Following these meetings, a majority of the city council requested that staff take a closer look at the developer's request and to evaluate possible options for discussion and consideration by the council. A majority of the council requested that staff attempt to identify options that would allow the project to continue to move forward while minimizing risk and exposure to the city. It was suggested to staff that we might look at a structure similar to what had been evaluated and approved by the council during the summer with that first partial bond issue. For the past several weeks, staff has spent considerable time evaluating the options available to the city, and I want to just say we were assisted with help from Sid Douglas, who is a legal counsel with Gilmore &amp; Bell, and with our bond underwriter, Dennis Mitchell with Piper Jaffray, and certainly with dialogue back and forth with the developer, Mr. Lowe and his team. And as a result of that, you're aware that staff has proposed and given to you in a staff report, three options that have been developed for your consideration. These options are outlined in the staff memorandum, which is dated January 19th, 2010, and those options begin on page two. And I do want to point out and note that none of the options as presented meet or achieve the original request as submitted to us by the developer. So there is, there is a gap, there still is a gap, but option two in your staff report comes the closest to addressing, I believe, his immediate needs, and I think there'll be more discussion with regard to that. Nevertheless, three options were developed. And in order to work through the memorandum, we've asked Sid Douglas to walk you through what's been proposed and to have him do that in just a moment. And I do appreciate the developer being here tonight and certainly mayor and council as you work through this discussion. Mr. Lowe and his team are available to respond to any questions that you may have or to provide additional information. We recognize, staff does, that this is a very serious policy consideration. It is policy. We've provided you, hopefully, with a report that outlines the pros and cons and the risks associated with the options that are presented to you. And with that, your honor, if you'll allow it, we'll turn it over to Mr. Douglas and he can take us through the report.
Mr. Douglas?
Mayor, members of the council. There, as we go through the process, one of the key terms that you'll probably hear a lot of people discuss about this evening is the term of coverage or debt service coverage ratio, and it's basically a premise on making assumptions as to what the expected revenue receipts are related to the project and comparing that to the expected or proposed debt service. And that sometimes will be described as a ratio of 1.25, 1.40, 1.50, or a higher ratio. But that, that ratio that you hear is a comparison of the expected revenue streams when you're trying to figure out there's enough money to pay debt service. The various assumptions that have been put together, the developer has taken one approach and has defined their request that would include five, five different revenue streams. The pilots that are being collected, which is a portion of the real estate taxes, the economic activity taxes, which is the sales taxes that are being generated, TDD revenues from sales taxes that are generated in three different TDDs out there. There's a super TIF concept, which is a portion of the city's non-captured sales tax monies that they would have committed for a full bond issue in the original plan, and then also some CID special assessments, community improvement district special assessments. All those revenues have been combined together and then they've made some, as to create their, their source of revenue stream. There's an assumption that's been made by the developer that this is going to be based off 16 committed tenants that will either have signed leases or contracts to purchase property and commitments to open their business. They've assumed that the pilots will grow at a 4% interest, or 4% growth factor every two years with reassessment. They've assumed that the sales taxes that would be included as part of their revenue stream will grow at 1.5% per year for the entire term of the bond issue. They've capitalized interest for a period of seven months. And then based on that, that they've, in their proposal, they've got a projected bond issue size and proceeds of the bond issue to be available to reimburse them for costs or to finance costs related to the project. As most of these things, financing projects, lay out, everything is dependent upon, on the assumptions, and so you can manipulate the assumptions in any way that you want to depend upon what you think is the most realistic expectation of what is, what's expected to occur. It also helps to deal with risk that the various parties are expecting in related to the transaction. So based on what the developer proposed, the city staff, including myself and Dennis Mitchell with Piper Jaffrey, we were discussed trying to structure the financing that would provide some form, or bond issues that would form the basis to provide monies to reimburse the developer for costs related to the project. But based on that, we modified those to be consistent with some internal policies that the finance department has used for assumptions on growth and consistent with the prior partial bond issue that already has been requested and completed. And consistent with that, rather than assume a pilot's growing at 4% every year with reassessment, we've assumed 3%, which is consistent with what the finance department has used for purposes of sizing general obligation bonds and the amount of money to be available to pay the debt service on general obligation bonds. We've assumed that the sales tax revenues will grow at 1.5%, which is consistent with what the developer has done, but we've capped that growth after 20 years as opposed to letting it continue to grow for the full term of the bond issues. We've capitalized interest for a period of 12 months because some of the businesses and retailers that are expected to be the revenue generators in the project are not even under construction yet, and so the 12 months of capitalized interest was to try to make sure that those businesses could be open, we'd have a source of revenue to pay debt service until they were open and could generate sales taxes. And we've also assumed a coverage factor, the debt service coverage ratio we talked about of 1.5 as opposed to, the developer was proposing 1.25. In addition, as far as outlining some of the things that staff felt was important to make sure got funded, on page two of the memo, there's some assumptions that we've made. The first one, where it talks about, bottom of the page, option twos and three requirements and assumptions, is there's about a million and a half to $2 million worth of improvements related to the intersection of Adams-Derry Parkway and I-70 that felt was important to handle the traffic that would expect to be drawn to this area. We've, as opposed to including the CID special assessments and the super TIF, those were revenue streams that were contemplated to be used with a full sizing and reimbursement to the developer, and since this was a partial bond issue, staff felt it was important to exclude those revenues, at least at this time. The bond issue for the second partial bond issue would be similar to the first, it would have a call feature that would allow the bonds to be paid off or redeemed at any time that the bond market was in a position that the city's credit enhancement or backing of the bonds was not required. There'd be a debt service reserve fund that was, would be funded in the maximum amount permitted by the IRS, and that's similar to what the developer was requesting. We'd have an independent market study to evaluate the revenue streams, to make sure that the developer's assumptions are reasonable, and then the city would continue to be able to retain full discretion on the future issuance of additional bonds, whether they be city-backed or just backed by the revenues from the development itself. And using these assumptions, each of those scenarios, whether you look at the developer's proposal or some of the options that have been presented, the developers, using their assumptions, they were able to generate... they were able to generate a bond issue that sized an approximate amount of $27 million, which would result in about $24 million of proceeds that would be available for reimbursement for their project costs. In response to that, to try to evaluate, consistent with what we've done with the prior bond issue, and some of the assumptions I've outlined, the city staff has put together a couple of alternatives. Obviously, one would be not to do anything, and that has the least amount of financial risk to the city. It doesn't necessarily help facilitate the finish of the construction of the project, but it does leave the city in a position of exposure to the least amount of financial risk. Option two, that's been identified by staff, is closest to what the developer is proposing, is consistent with the city's assumptions, but it would generate a bond issue of about just under $17 million in proceeds that would be available for reimbursement of a little over $14 million. And then option three is a little bit different approach. Rather than assuming a coverage ratio, we tried to back into identifying certain costs that we thought would be important to try to make sure got completed and fund some things that the developer was interested in, in making sure got completed. Rather than assuming a coverage ratio and how big the bond issue was, we solved for a bond issue to generate a certain amount of net proceeds, and then we showed a debt service coverage that would be available as a result of that. If we did a bond issue of approximately $10 million, there would be proceeds that would be available for the developer of about $8.5 million. But the coverage ratio that would be available for that increases dramatically, instead of being at 1.5, it would be approximately 2.5. The coverages for the bond issues are important because eventually the city wants to make sure that we can be in a position to get the city backing away from the bond issues, whether we do just one or whether we do another one to help facilitate the construction of the project. We need to have an exit strategy, and so the exit strategy obviously is a call feature, and we could try to do a bond issue without the backing of the city. And there is some market for that, but it's a very limited market, and we need to generate a greater amount of history of the sales tax operations and the development of the project. But if we do something without the city backing, the city's credit right now is basically like a double A minus credit. If you do it without that backing, the bonds probably would not be rated, or if they do, they'll have a very low rating. And so the interest rate factor that would be included in a bond issue basically goes from the bond issue that's about 6% net interest cost to probably about an overall borrowing cost of 7.5%. And so what that means from an exit strategy is if we just have the existing revenues from the retailers that we've assumed, the ones that are already in the target that's open, and the other retailers are already open, and the 16 committed tenants that the developer is proposing, that those revenue streams using a higher interest rate will probably generate a coverage of about 1.2x. In order to get the city off the backing of these bonds, that's probably not sufficient to sell the bonds without the city backing. So the city will, in order to get off the hook, will have to have further completion of the development of the project or a significant increase in the capacity of the bond markets to accept a financing like this without the city backing. That's, I think, kind of a summary. I'd be glad to take any questions or if I've missed something that staff was expecting.
Any questions, Mr. Douglas? Any questions?
Your Honor, I'd like to just ask a question, your comment, the significantly higher cost of interest for the developer to obtain bonds. That's, these numbers you're looking at is in today's market. If you pull this out, assuming, I guess most things I read suggest cost of money is going to be going up, not down or not flat. How do, what's your prognosis for the incentive for the developer to take these bonds out or refinance five years from now or three years from now?
Well, the developer is probably better able to speak to what his incentive is, but you know, from my perspective and experience would be is that, and we've heard quite a bit about this from the developer for the request from their first bond issue, is that they have lenders that have expectations that they're providing financing to complete the construction of the project, and they're relying upon the original plan, which contemplated bonds to be issued to provide reimbursement of a certain dollar amount. Those proceeds that would go back to the developer would be used to pay down those loans, and being able to pay down those loans or pay off some of them completely puts the developer in a position where they can achieve their expected business return for the project. Paying a significant amount of interest until the bonds can be issued to reimburse them really cuts into their bottom line. I don't know what they're borrowing at, and we're talking about borrowing at tax-exempt interest rates, that would be 6% overall for a city-backing deal, is probably going to be 7.5% tax-exempt if it wasn't city-backed. You know, I don't know what they're paying, but I imagine it's well north of that. So to the extent that they can get those paid off, it enhances their ability to make profits and move on to the next deals.
Any other questions?
Your Honor, are there other cities in the area that back bonds for projects like, you know, something similar to this type of thing?
There's two that do it on a pretty frequent basis. Kansas City, Missouri, has done that. Independence does it on a regular basis. Beyond that, it's pretty limited, and I, you know, each of them have different experiences with how that has worked, and I don't know specifically what kind of special requirements or assumptions that they build into those bond issues. But it's, but there are some communities that have done that. I know that RED has been working on a project out in Lee Summit, and they considered city backing of a bond issue, but went another way. They were trying to use some of their own excess cash and use that as a means to enhance their return on their cash for the investments that were available to make a loan for that project to proceed forward for some of that. I don't think that that loan has actually been drawn upon, but at least it's been approved and authorized by the city. But I'm not aware of any others that, at least on the Missouri side, that do that on a regular basis.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Douglas? Is there anyone else from the team, staff that you work with that you want to make comments before I ask the council if they have questions?
Your Honor, I just might make one comment, is that at the conclusion of your discussion tonight, staff is asking for and is hoping to get some specific direction with regard to this particular issue, and in fact, in your agenda packet, you had some draft language proposed. Certainly, at this point, we don't know how this discussion unfolds or what it looks like, but we will be asking for and requesting that there will be some specific level of direction given to us here as you conclude and undertake this discussion.
That will be done. Okay. Any questions of Mr. Lowe and the RED Development Group this year? Councilmembers?
Your Honor?
Yes?
Yes, I do have a question. And I disclose, I think almost all of us have met with you sometime recently, so for the sake of, for the audience to know that there's additional discussion that has gone on. In our discussion, we talked about alternative two, alternative three. And I think in essence, RED's position was, alternative three really didn't buy much. It was not enough money to really get over the hump of where you are today. I guess I would throw out, what would be your response to alternative four, that being about halfway in between, 13.5 million gross with netting in the order of 11 million?
First, Councilman, I want to make sure that I don't come across as minimizing any amount of money that we're discussing, because in every instance, the council has given serious consideration to any dollar here, which is definitely more than is contemplated in the development agreement, and is greatly appreciated by us as the developer. I have gone over with most of you the, what I call my priority of needs as it relates to the project, in order to put it, it being the project, in the most safe and sound position to ultimately generate the maximum amount of revenue that will ultimately take the entire bond issue out. And we believe that option number two, with one minor tweak, and I do consider it a minor tweak, and I can talk about that in a minute, but with one minor tweak, puts us in the best position to complete the entire project without having to come back before council one more time for the request for another interim bond issue to help fund its completion. Anything shy of option two, again, in my opinion, puts us in a position, based on the capital stack that we have in place today, puts us in a position where it would be highly likely that we would need to come back for some additional assistance. And so again, I don't want to disregard any amount of money, I don't want to discount any amount of money that you're suggesting, but I think that it would be problematic, and I think, again, we'd be addressing this in not too long a time period one more time. And I would be happy, Councilmen, to review the list of what we consider our priorities as far as uses of the proceeds of the bond issues, to give everybody an understanding of what that is, if you'd like me to take the time to do that.
Why don't you go ahead for the sake of those in the audience as well as those that might be hearing this?
Okay. It might be best for me to start then with our suggestion as to the tweak to option two. I really do appreciate the staff's hard work, everybody on the staff, to come up with the creative solutions that are before you. Option two does get us as close as, or you know, closer than, you know, than any of the other options. The tweak or the add that we would suggest to that would be adding the CID proceeds that are contemplated under the development agreement. It's my belief that, or thought that, staff left the CID revenues out of the underwriting scenario here because the CID itself is not fully uncompleted, not all of the i's are dotted and t's are crossed. It's approved by this body, and staff, please correct me if I'm out of line here, but I do believe the CID is approved by this body. We have the ability to implement that property tax assessment, it's not a sales tax assessment, it is a property tax assessment. We have the ability today, upon completion of some paperwork and a meeting of the CID board, to implement that property tax. That property tax sits on the property as a first lien bond, meaning it's prior to the mortgage that we have in place with our vertical construction lender. In such, because of its prior position on the land, that CID bond issue can be completed without an annual appropriation. We believe that it could generate roughly another $1.5 million of proceeds out of a bond issue at this time, and again, that is a million and a half dollars that would not need to be secured by an annual appropriation of the city. That additional million and a half dollars, ironically, is almost exactly the amount of money we need to finalize what would be 100% of the offsite improvements that were contemplated, again, by the development agreement for us to complete. We're at about, I believe, again, approximately 12.5 million of the 14 million or so dollars in offsite improvements that are required, and as part of this request, we are anticipating that the balance of those offsite improvements would need to be completed. So the tweak, I guess, that I would call the tweak to the option number two, would be a request respectfully for you to consider the addition of the CID property tax assessment to be allowed to be part of the bond issue.
Can you respond or have a bond counsel?
Mayor, Mr. Lowe's comments are accurate. I'll defer to also Christine Kates and Todd Pelham, but we did exclude the CID revenue from our analysis and assessments because it has not been activated. The CID has been formed, it has been approved by the city council. The CID special assessment revenue was always considered to be a component of the TIF plan, which has been approved. It is there. If this council provides direction tonight and would take a step in the direction of issuing additional bonds, our one request and caveat would be at the time that we complete the bond, a bond calendar, and we're ready to issue bonds, that all that due diligence and that work has to be completed. If it's not, we don't include the revenue.
Certainly. The chart that I put before you is, again, what I call our list of priorities of where bond dollars, public dollars, would need to be expended in order to put the project in a secure position to generate the maximum amount of sales tax revenue to posture the project for its ultimate bond issue, where all of the bonds could be issued and the annual appropriation could be wiped off, should the council so choose. You can see the total required or requested by the developer, the total immediate uses of bond proceeds that we have today totals 15.4 million. The anticipated option number two without the CID add-on is 15.4 million. The CID, again, would total, in our estimation, about 1.5 million, which would cover that $1.3 million deficit shown. The first, I'll run to these very quickly. The first one is a little, there's some detail that needs to go with it, and I don't need to put all of this out in the public, but I think it's at least important for you to understand generally what's going on. But we would anticipate that the first need of public dollars would go towards our public bridge loan. Currently, we have a $17 million bridge loan with a local bank that we have utilized to complete public improvements above and beyond the dollars that were provided by the first bond issue here. We want to get Hillcrest Bank, the bank that's provided this facility, down to a $13 million level on that TIF bridge loan. We want to do that for one very simple reason. If they're paid down to 13 million, that provides them the ability to participate in the vertical construction loan on the shopping center to the tune of $7 million. They have a lending limit of $20 million per customer. Mutual of Omaha, who is our vertical construction lender on the project, has approved the vertical construction loan, up to 32 million. Their piece would be 25. They need a $7 million participant. In the credit markets the way they are today, they've had a very difficult challenge finding that participant. Hillcrest has agreed to step up and act as that participant, to the extent that they can get paid down to $13 million on the TIF bridge loan so that they can stay within their legal lending limit.
Can you share with us what some of those public improvements are?
That...
That you're going to be paying down for? Hillcrest provided the bridge loan to do?
Well, yeah, Hillcrest, Hillcrest's public bridge loan to date, that total 17 million was originally roughly 25 million, 24 million, has provided dollars for numerous publicly eligible and certified expenses that staff has signed off on. The bulk of their money, though, which was the early money in before any bond issue, were for Adams Dairy Road and offsite improvements. So the bulk of the money that Hillcrest has in, technically, because it was the first money in, went to those offsite improvements, including Adams Dairy, R.D. Myes, and the other streets.
That's what I'm looking for, so people would know where it went.
Right, absolutely.
Because you can see those improvements now, so...
Right. And we believe if we could get Hillcrest to a level where they can participate in the vertical construction loan, that puts the vertical construction loan in a position to allow... to allow us the ability to commence construction on the shop spaces and get the sales tax revenue from those shops generating as soon as we can get a bill. That puts us in the safest position possible to have maximum sales tax revenue flowing from the project, to get an ultimate bond issue completed that not only gets the city off their annual appropriation, but frankly, gets our equity out of the deal and gets the bond loan paid off. The second need is a one point five million dollar outstanding payable to Kidwell Construction, who has been our, not only general contractor for site work, but a very amazing and sincere partner. In order for him to come back to work, he needs that outstanding invoice paid. It's all, again, for public work, both on and offsite there, all of which was TIF-eligible and certified by staff. The next is a line item is a two million dollar payment. That goes to Coles in return for significant building upgrades that they've agreed to make as part of the construction of their building. The transaction that we, or the deal that we negotiated with the city early on, the city staff was very adamant that you don't get the plain old vanilla shell shopping center here, that there are upgraded architectural features. And in some instances, to attract tenants like Coles, we had to contribute to that cause. So, Coles has asked that we escrow two million dollars for their building upgrades prior to them closing escrow on the property and commencing construction. The next is the one point five million that I referenced earlier. That one point five million, we believe, could be easily covered by the CID special assessment, property tax assessment, to the extent that council would be, would give some consideration to adding that to the option two deal. And then, the last line item is the six point four million dollars. That, too, is very critical because that provides the parking lots and landscaping necessary to get the balance of the junior acres that exist to the east of Target open for business. We have the money to build the shelves, the buildings themselves. This would provide the dollars necessary to allow people to park in the parking lots. If we are not able to deliver the parking lots, obviously, it puts us in a position where the tenants would have the ability to terminate their leases, again, because we had not completed our end of the bargain. I was asked the question several times today, if the city were to step up and partner once again on a bond issue, what is Red's motivation to work to get all of the sales tax revenue flowing here and ultimately get the city off of the annual appropriations that they've given in order to keep the project moving? The answer, in my mind, is pretty easy. We, as a company, have a very significant amount of equity in this project. In addition, we have a very significant amount of debt associated with this project. On the public side of the transaction, as I mentioned, Hillcrest currently has seventeen million dollars of money on the TIF bridge loan. The city currently has roughly twelve and a half, and if they were to act tonight to authorize this bond issue, would have somewhere in the ballpark of twenty-six million, twenty-seven million dollars of TIF proceeds invested in the project. The difference between those three sources to get to the forty-nine million dollar ultimate number is equity that's been infused by our company. That number on the public side totals in excess of eight million dollars, and our investment on the private side is even greater than that from an equity standpoint. But in order for us to get our eight million dollars back and in order to get the Hillcrest TIF bridge loan paid back, we need an ultimate bond issue. We need that third bond issue, the one that would allow the city, if they so chose, to get off the annual appropriation.
Any questions?
Your Honor?
Yes.
The six point four million stands out, obviously, because of its size. Can you expand any further than just parking lots and landscaping?
It's, you know, it is certainly all certifiable or already certified, TIF-eligible expenses that are all approved through the development agreement. The specific line items, I don't have with me tonight, but I would be happy to, excuse me, I would be happy to provide those. But in essence, what it does is it makes available and ready for vehicular and pedestrian use all of the land that is to the east of Target in front of the junior anchors.
That does not include any of the lifestyle center to the north?
No, sir. There would be an approximate, just right at, just shy of two million dollars of additional equity that we will be required as a company to either put in the project or find a lender to increase the Hillcrest Bridge Loan on the TIF side in order to complete those parking lots.
Thank you.
Any other questions from Mr. Lowe?
I don't really have a question. When would it be proper to make a statement of sorts?
Very, very soon. All right. Thank you, Mr. Lowe.
Thank you.
I guess we're ready for your statement, Councilman Reed.
Okay. Well, this has been an extremely complicated issue, and I've spent a lot of time and spent a lot of time talking with Mr. Lowe and his group today. Have talked with a lot of others. It's a large commitment. But for the life of me, I cannot see us not letting this project go forth and be completed. I think there'd be nothing worse than a half, half-done shopping center, wouldn't even quite be half-done at this point if we did not participate. And I think for the good of the city, so that we don't lose our tax leakage because it's going someplace else, and it's an entryway into the city, and I think eventually it's going to be a very, very nice attribute to our city. But I think we really have to look seriously at, I think, that we were given three options. One was to do nothing, number two, and number three was just not enough to really get them over the hump to get things done. So, I think we need to really consider, in my opinion, number two, because I want this to be a first-class shopping center when it's done. I think the whole city does. We don't just want to hodgepodge.
Is that a motion that we adopt option two?
Well, I didn't know that. I just wanted to make statements. You know, I'd be glad to make that motion, but maybe somebody else would like to make some comments first.
Any other statements?
Sure, Your Honor. I have a few things to say about this.
All right.
First of all, I want to start out by saying that we're very thrilled to get new shopping and restaurants here in Blue Springs. We're fortunate to have a quality developer like Red and Dan Lowe as the developer for Adams Dairy Landing. The discussion tonight, and I apologize, I have a cold, so I'm sounding kind of manly this evening.
You didn't notice that.
The discussion tonight is what is the role of local government? I'm a very conservative person, as you know, especially on fiscal matters. At our city council meeting last April, I voted against backing the bonds for Red for fourteen million dollars for a variety of reasons. I felt, and I still feel, that it is not responsible for elected leaders to place the risk of development of a mall from the developers and the banks onto the taxpayers. I don't agree with bailouts, and I don't believe in putting the burden on our citizens. It is the role of the city of Blue Springs and local government to provide basic services such as police protection, water, sewer, and roads. And it is not our responsibility to co-sign loans for a shopping center, which is what we're basically doing. The last time this council decided to co-sign a loan for Red, it was based on the cash registers for Walmart, Home Depot, Coronado Place, Miners Market, and Target, all existing businesses with proven track records, with the exception of Target. And Mr. Dan Lowe, at that meeting, stated that it was a pretty safe bet, and I agree that it was probably a pretty safe bet. But I don't believe in betting or gambling with the taxpayers' money. This time, we have a proposal that's not as safe a bet because instead of Walmart and Target's cash registers, we're looking at Petco and Gordmans and Maurice's and Coles, all businesses without a proven track record here, or even a market study having been done. We're betting that all of these stores are going to stay in business for the next twenty-nine years. If any of the major anchors close or relocate their stores and do not meet projections, we will be faced with taking over the payments. According to our staff report, these payments could approach two and a half million dollars a year. This money would have to come out of our general fund, and as we all know with working with the budget, I don't know where in the world we would find two and a half million dollars, and we would have to cut basic services. By entering into such an agreement, we could adversely affect our good credit rating and push us to our bond capacity and make it difficult for us to get bonds for things that we really need as a city. Also, another concern that I have that was mentioned in the staff report is that we have issued seventy-four million dollars in bonds in the last twelve months. According to our staff, any additional bond issuance could further expose the city's general fund. I can't support this proposal whether it's twenty-seven million dollars or seventeen million dollars or ten million dollars. The stakes are too high, the risk is too great. We all want shopping, we all want restaurants, but when we're looking at the possibility of having to dump, dip into our general fund, it worries me, it concerns me, and I do not believe it's something we should be doing.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other comments from anyone?
Your Honor?
Councilman Edmanson?
I would like to disclose that I've had several meetings with Mr. Lowe and his staff. Just so constituents know, I think this is a subject that you shouldn't take lightly and that you should ask questions, you should ask tough questions of them, and I think we have, I have. And I think that's a responsibility of my part as a councilman to do more than just what you see up here. I think you really have to dig in and find out some things. I did vote in favor of the last one. We do see some things going out there. I think we had, if I correctly, if I remember correctly, we generated three hundred and thirty-two new jobs out on the Parkway with what we see opened up out there. Hopefully, soon, we'll have a report on the tax, how the tax is going as far as sales taxes come in for those projects, which would be really nice to see that and see how that's going. With this issuance here, we probably were looking at increasing the jobs out there to close to six hundred to six hundred and fifty jobs, I believe, if I, again, if I remember my figures correctly. So, I think that's a benefit to the taxpayers in this community, that there's some jobs here that'll be available. My fellow councilman, Sissy Reed, indicated about the sales tax leakage. At one time, I think it was estimated at close to three hundred million dollars a year we lose in sales tax to the other communities around us. Some of those communities that do back bonds for projects and are being very successful, I mean, it doesn't take very far to drive, and you can see that kind of success. So, it's nice to see some of this maybe coming home to us. The other points I'd like to make out would be is if, again, if I remember correctly, Adams Dairy opened up in nineteen ninety-four. I believe that's when we had our opening ceremony on that. A lot of what went on out in Adams Dairy was relocations from within the city until recently. We've had some new additions out there. Originally, it was planned to be more of a flex techs, business nature for jobs and hopefully developing new houses. It looked like that wasn't working, and we've gone a different tack on this with as far as capitalizing on that land that's next to I-70 for retail location that could generate sales tax, save some sales tax that we were losing. That, in turn, I think, will open up, hopefully, the Missouri Innovation Park. This will be a nice asset for that and generate some of those office-type, higher-end-paying jobs that I think we'd all like to have here in Blue Springs. Some of the things that I worry about is that we subsidize already some things out there. Now, we're backing the bonds, but we subsidized a golf course. We have taxpayers' money that on a regular basis comes out of the general fund to help subsidize a golf course. It doesn't make enough money to keep itself afloat. Is that fair? We impose a tax, a room tax, to subsidize a conference center, and that doesn't actually generate enough money, and I think we've had to dip into some of our general funds to help offset that. So, we're already doing some of these things that, to me, we're already doing some of these things that here we're setting, are we obligating taxpayers or taking a risk? I think we already are taking a risk. So, in some ways, I see this as though a difficult decision. I think it's a good decision to go forward with this project and keep this project online just for the future of our community, to keep that money here and keep it home.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman. Any other comments?
Amen to Candy did a good job.
Amen to who?
I said, "Amen to Candy did a good job."
To who?
Councilman.
Oh, Councilman.
Oh, thank you.
I think he was first.
I was just going to ask a question to clarify.
Yes.
What we're really voting on is to give staff direction to prepare this issue with more detailed background so that we can vote on it. We really are not voting, taking a final vote at this point. Am I correct?
That is correct, Councilman. We, staff did not want to initiate the process of undertaking all of the background, the due diligence, the market study that would be required to issue bonds. We would have to, we would most likely engage Canyon to complete a thorough revenue study because that work has not been done and it's required. So, in fact, we will have to bring that contract back to the city council for approval and consideration. We would have to put together a timeframe. This simply gives us marching orders to either go forward or to not go forward.
So, in other words, however we vote tonight on this, it will not be binding on future vote? We may very well vote to do, give staff the go-ahead to produce this and vote it down when it comes up finally. I'm not sure that's a good policy. That's kind of a waste of money. But in theory, isn't that where we are?
I think in theory, you're right, that you could do that, but I think it's an exercise of futility if you say, "Let's go with it," knowing that you're going not support it later.
Well, unless, unless in doing this study, things look different.
Right, yeah.
I think, and that's certainly possible, and there's time in there also.
Well, what kind of timeframe are we looking at? If we give the okay to proceed tonight, what kind of timeframe before you would actually bring it back us to approve it?
We'll firm up the schedule if that's what happens tonight. You could look somewhere between sixty and ninety days. And Mr. Mitchell, nod your head, but did you not tell me you thought maybe the end of March was, and I think you indicated you hadn't built in any time in there for the revenue market study. So, you'd have to add a little bit of timeframe into that process for that. So, again, I think you're looking at reasonably a sixty or ninety-day window, so somewhere between the end of March and perhaps the end of April before the actual documents and ordinances would be back in front of you for consideration.
The thing, and if we're talking about that timeframe, there will be at least two new city council members sitting here that would have to make that decision, because it will be after the April election, and all the districts are contested, and we'll talk about that a little bit later. Okay. You down, Councilman Seaver?
For the moment, I reserve the right to come back.
All right. Councilman Fowler and then Councilman Low.
Okay. Yes, Your Honor. I guess anytime new information would come my way, I always reserve the right to change position on an issue because, so I understand that, and I think that, you know, if a retail study came back and said this was a bad decision for Blue Springs, I hope we all change it to be negative, so. My concern is, same thing we had last time on this, basically, the market says, "We're not going to loan money on this project, it's too risky for us. So, citizens, will you take on and back these, you know, take that risk?" The city council voted for it again this past spring, and back bonds that the industry wouldn't back. And I think that's a risky position for the city to be in. It happened. Now, we're talking about doubling down one more time, okay? Again, the market won't loan money on this project, but the citizens, we certainly hope you'll come through and back these bonds again. And there comes enough time when it's too far to extend the credit. Mine was quite a while earlier to this, but I guess I'd lobby all my council members to say no. This is too much, it's gone too far. And if you do, which, you know, look into, I mean, go forward with this, I would say that proportional to the risk, profits should be shared, okay? In the original agreement- In the original agreements on all these tax incentives, there is return on investment for the developer. Well, if the developer is no longer taking that development risk with their cash and asking the citizens of Blue Springs to take over that cash, proportionally, that return on investment should come back to the city of Blue Springs, the taxpayers. If they're the ones taking the risk, they're the ones that should get a return on investment back on their money. So I would certainly be making a motion to amend anything that anytime we do go out and put the citizens at risk, that they proportionally get their share of the return on investment. I also, I'm going to forecast that if the city does go forward with this one more time, another $14 million, you add all the debt service, there's a huge amount of risk out there. These stores may or may not be able to produce it, but I can tell you that another thing that's going to happen down the road is, well, to protect the city, now that you've actually done all this, to protect the city, let's go ahead and approve that one cent CID sales tax that's hanging out there. That it really doesn't take a whole lot to go ahead and do. People are going to be coming back and tell you, "Look, you reduce your risk, it'll be better, we get lower interest rates, it's really better for everybody." And I got to say, when does this stop? When does this continually, do we keep on going back to the well, taking the citizens, approving new taxes on them? Where does it stop? I think we've gone too far as it is. What comments?
Councilman Lauer?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. In addition to some of the things that everyone has already said, this certainly is not a clear-cut yes or no answer. There are pros, there are cons, there are ways to look at the cost of doing something, and there are costs to be looked at when you do nothing. And in balancing all those things out, Councilman Edmondson indicated that with the junior anchors in place, we would have close to 650 jobs. With the entire facility completed, we're looking at a total of about 1,600 jobs. And certainly, there's a cost of the city to invest in the community as far as job creation, and so that's certainly one thing to look at. In conversation, as everyone indicated, we've had conversations with Dan Low and staff. In conversation this afternoon, and I wanted to restate to make sure I'm clear, is that if the city proceeds with a bond issuance at this point in time, any monies that come back, it would be so set up that the city would get the first funds that come through until that obligation is met, and then Hillcrest Bank would be the second in order, and then Red Development would be the third to get their funds reimbursed. Is that fair, Mr. Low? And so, in one of the questions being, what is their interest in getting this to move forward, they get nothing until this is completed and things move ahead, nor does the bank, since we are the first in order of receiving those funds. One of the other things that I have had lots of conversation with citizens and other individuals in the community as well is that the area at ADP and Coronado is great, that we've got improvements going, but people are still looking for that to be finished. It is still a congested area, it is still an area where you have to watch for traffic and everything else, and so certainly, the infrastructure there needs to be completed. And if it's not done through this initiative, then it would fall upon the city to come up with that money to make that happen. So we certainly want to see that happen. And then also, in conversations about the worst-case scenario of the city in backing these, and of course, there is a risk, I'm not denying that, there is, when this is all carried out to the nth degree, and should there be a problem with getting, having other issuances of the bond where the city would still retain that, we would still have the opportunity to put that revenue into the payoff of the bond. So in essence, it would be, the city would be able to pay off the bond based on the income that's coming through. And if it is certainly continuing on in a successful fashion like we would like it to, then the opportunity to pay off that bond comes at a much shorter timeframe than the 29 years that we're looking at. One other thing that Blue Springs, I believe, has supporting this initiative that other cities around us may not, such as Lee's Summit and so forth, is that we have I-70 access to the various stores and restaurants and things that are going to be going in, whereas some of the areas here do not have that major thoroughfare going through. And we've already seen where there is some regional draw into this area from Columbia, Concordia on over, from Harrisonville up, from Buckner South, and so we're gaining more dollars into the city than just our own citizens paying and purchasing at this area. So, given all of that, along with the other elements that Councilman Edmondson and Councilman Reed have mentioned, I am supportive of moving forward in the process, certainly to make sure there's the due diligence, as Councilman Shaver indicated, and all of the assumptions that were being made here and that are listed. And also, including that one point, I'm sorry, the 1.5 million of the CID revenue that we had discussed earlier, that would be discounted from this amount that we're looking at in option two.
Anyone else before we ask for a motion?
Your Honor, I just had a quick comment. There's a number that keeps getting mentioned. It got mentioned at the April 20 meeting by Councilman Lauer and by Mr. Dan Low, it got mentioned again today by Councilman Edmondson, and that number is $364.6 million of leakage that we have. That's the number that gets quoted. And suppose it came out of the Canyon study, $300 million leakage. You just said 300 million. We heard it, Dan Low had it on a slide, 364.6 million leakage. I mean, that number sounds kind of crazy to me because if you actually get out your calculator and you figure it out, that comes out to $6,629 for every woman, man, and child. And that's not going to be for grocery stores because we've got three grocery stores and we've got a Walmart. You take a family of four, that means that they go shopping at the mall and spend $25,516. And I know I have a family of four and we don't spend $25,000 at the mall. The average income in Blue Springs is $55,000. So theoretically, what your theory is, is that people are spending half of their money at the shopping mall. So I just wanted to address that $364 million that keeps getting thrown around at every meeting. I don't, I don't know where this number came from, you say the Canyon Research, but it sounds really high to me, so I just thought I'd mention that before anyone else brings it up again.
Your Honor, one more comment, too. I got to say that, you know, with a TIF, a super TIF of real estate CID sitting out there that is approved, all the TDD money that's going into this, most of these tax dollars are already committed to this project, okay? You're talking about new sales tax dollars, well, they're already committed back to it. With the super TIF, the money, the sales tax can be up to 75% of each sales tax dollar going to the city of Blue Springs, 75 cents out of each one goes into the project. So there's only a minuscule amount left, and I don't know how many times we can recount the same cash flow, but I've seen that in this math so many times, but you can really only count it once, and I've seen it multiplied out many times. I will say that, Your Honor, I do appreciate staff. Staff is in a very unique political climate on this, and this is one time that staff has finally started to say, you know, enough could be enough, and it's time to start talking about this. So I, to staff, I say thank you and really think you should raise, continue to raise that flag. I realize it's a difficult political climate to do that in, but appreciate what you stood up for this time.
Any other comments before we accept the motion?
I'd like to make a couple more comments.
Couple more comments.
In response. One is, in terms of talking return to the developer, all of these dollars we're talking about is coming out of the 49 million TIF. So there is no additional dollars one way or the other, my understanding, in whether we support these bonds or do not support them. The total TIF dollars is part of the TIF contract. So I don't think that really makes any difference to the return that Red gets on the project. It makes a difference in terms of the timing. Obviously, if we back the bonds, they have lower interest, they're more efficient, therefore they pay off quicker. But it's still the same number of total dollars possible there, I believe.
Is there?
Go ahead.
Well, I have a question about that. Is there, is there not a line item in the TIF budget of the 49 million or whatever that talks about return on investment in the spreadsheet?
I'll leave that, who's the expert that can answer that? I cannot.
In the original approved TIF.
Can any staff member answer that, or bond counsel, or first team?
You've got that spreadsheet.
I don't have a spreadsheet, but just a couple comments because your point is well taken as far as public participation in profit. Staff did a great job in negotiating this development agreement, I've said that many a time. The city already has the ability to participate in profit on this project once we exceed a certain return. The certain return was actually set by your consultants who deemed what would be a reasonable return in the marketplace. So I think that it's definitely structured in a manner today that would allow you, if for some unforeseen reason we were able to achieve outlandish returns above and beyond what we ever anticipated we might, allow the city to participate in any profit above and beyond. And I think that yield hurdle's like 11 or 12%, it's a reasonably low. And the other comment I wanted to make is, again, with all due respect, Councilman, banks have loaned on this project. You know, you made the comment, "No one's willing to loan on the project and that's why we're here." That's not true. There's in excess of $50 million of borrowed money on the project, there's in excess of $40 million of cash equity in the deal. So not only have people agreed to put equity in the deal, but they've also agreed to loan on the project. So it's not like we're presenting a proposal here to you because no one's willing to touch the investment.
Then why not continue to ask them to support it?
Well, I think, I think, I know you're a smart guy, so I know you're familiar with the credit markets and what's going on out there. Thank you.
Well, Your Honor, relative to the threshold that he mentioned, what I'm saying is, is that threshold, adequate return on investment is probably 11%, okay? But when the risk is now shipped to the citizens, I don't even think that 11%, I think proportionally that needs to be, there needs to be some math done on that because the citizens are now taking the risk that the developer was estimated was supposed to be taking. So their cash is, it's going to be our cash, it's on the line.
Any other comments?
I guess I'll make one last comment.
Let's wrap this up, folks.
Thank you, Your Honor.
We discussed it prior to tonight, we discussed it a lot tonight, and I'm going to get one more comment and we're going to ask for a motion.
I guess my comment would be that, you know, I appreciate shopping and restaurants in Blue Springs, believe me. My concern is that right now, we're transferring all of the risk, as Councilman Fowler said to our citizens, this is millions of dollars. I'm not going to be here on the City Council when this potentially could be a problem. This is something that, according to staff, we're going to have a hard time getting out from under because the interest rate is so great for this developer that they're going to have a hard time refinancing and getting us out from under this umbrella. So I'm not looking at the immediate, when the stores come in, I'm looking at seven and eight years from now, when these stores aren't shiny and new and they're not meeting projections, and future councils and staff are going to have to come up with the shortfall and the appropriations out of our general fund. So I'm just going to make the statement that I won't be here when the ramifications hit, but I am concerned for future council and for our citizens.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
That we adopt which option?
Number two, with, was it there?
With the CID?
The CID, yes.
Okay, Councilman Reed has made the motion that we adopt option two to include the CID. Is there a second?
Your Honor, I'm probably going to second, but I just want to make sure this is a motion for staff to pursue this, to come back to us at a later date with the actual wording of what we're, we'll actually be voting on.
Yeah, that's what it is, that's what, the way that-
Then I would second that.
Mr. Johnson described it.
Your, Your Honor, it would be the language that is included in your council packet with you filling in the blanks as you've determined.
Okay, would you, well, why don't we read that, Mr. Johnson, so we can make sure everybody understands?
Okay, a motion recommending approval for option two. Ms. Reed, is that what you?
Yes.
As, and directing staff to prepare all the documents and ordinances necessary to be voted on by the City Council in order to accomplish a second partial bond issue for Adams Dairy Landing in the total estimated amount of X number of million. You have the staff report that's identified as approximately 16.9 million, and again, you're aware that that, those are estimates subject to assumptions and variables that may change between now and then. The motion continues, and to provide city backing via annual appropriation in order for the bonds to receive a credit rating, under no circumstances will a bond issue be approved unless projected revenue available for debt service coverage ratio is at least 1.5 times greater than projected debt service on the bonds. A motion also recommends approval and compliance with the attached Exhibit A, and Exhibit A identifies expectations for things that would be completed prior to bonds being issued and an expectation of things that would be completed with the bond proceeds.
And it further includes the CID, so?
Yes, you would amend that. Do include the CID.
Right, those are motion.
Your Honor, just for the public's general information, can we go ahead and state what those expectations are? Is that permissible?
No.
State what? State what the expectations that were, we just mentioned them, but nobody knows them but us if we're looking at staff.
There are 10 of them, so you want to read those?
I would like to have that, yeah.
I will read, this is Exhibit A from staff reports called Use of Bond Proceeds and Conditions for Bond Issuance. Mr. Palam, are you going to put that up? Item number one is completion of off-site road work along Coronado west of Adams Dairy Parkway and required road improvements by MoDOT for I-70 and ADP related to Adams Farm TIF project shall be accomplished with the proceeds. Number two, completion of on- and off-site work and/or tenant finish needed to allow the following businesses to open for business in accordance with the revised construction schedule provided by the developer. In parentheses, Kohl's, Michael's, Gordman, Staples, M&amp;I Bank, Arby's, Olive Garden, Petco, Famous Footwear, Books-A-Million, and these shall be accomplished with the proceeds. Number three, tenant documentation including signed and executed leases for proposed tenants including Kohl's and other retailers identified by the developer and included in staff report with commitments to open for business in 2010 shall be provided prior to issuance. And I just want to make a footnote there on that particular one, we specifically identified Kohl's because at this point in time, we do not have a signed and executed lease with Kohl's, and Kohl's represents a significant portion of this particular proposal.
Mr. Johnson, there may be an update to that.
Is there?
Kohl's is signed. I just got the document today.
The developer is saying that the Kohl's document at least is signed?
Contract.
Contract. Okay. Item number four, any outstanding city obligations relating to the approved TIF plan shall be paid out of the bond proceeds. Item number five, a revenue market study shall be completed by Canyon Research Southwest Inc. or someone else selected by the city, along with the required bond due diligence prior to issuance. As we've indicated, our underwriter has done a fabulous job in putting these, looking at the various assumptions and revenue estimates, but we'll have an independent study of that work be completed. We would anticipate that the numbers you've received would be supported by that study, but we'll reserve judgment until we have that study. Item number six is a legal opinion from Red Legal Counsel regarding the accuracy of information supplied in connection with bond documentation on Red as a business entity, and the development shall be provided prior to issuance. Number seven, Red will provide a revised construction schedule for the project prior to issuance. Number eight, debt service coverage ratio of 1.5 shall be provided by the bond issuance. Item number nine, one year of debt service reserve shall be provided by the bond issuance. And item number 10, 12 months of capitalized interest shall be provided by the bond issuance. And we indicate in parentheses that should the full amount of capitalized interest not be needed, any remaining balances may be available to satisfy any outstanding amounts owed to the city or apply to outstanding debt. We would also add a footnote to that, that any outstanding, if 12 months of capitalized interest isn't needed, you could also apply those proceeds to the project construction fund. And- And if the council likes, we could also add an item number 11 here, addressing the CID revenue that had been mentioned earlier.
Okay.
Thank you, Your Honor. Appreciate you indulging me.
Sure. You've had a motion, you've had a second.
And I have a motion.
Any further discussion?
An amendment.
Oh, you have, okay. Mr. Fowler has an amendment to the motion.
Yes, Your Honor, as mentioned earlier, I'd like to make a motion to amend that staff, when they're reviewing this, they also provide a formula that shares the potential return on investment. Again, that threshold, if quoted, was around 11%, but we proportionally look at it, as long as the citizens are backing the bonds for this, then they should get a return on that investment as well. And if for 29 years it goes that the city is the one backing those, then the city should get that proportion of return on investment, okay? So my motion is that we amend it to proportionally share the agreed-upon return on investment in the project, that we amend that, including the citizens.
You've heard the amendment, proposed amendment. Is there a second?
Sure, I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion?
I guess my question to Mr. Johnson would be, is that doable thing? If you have, on staff?
I'm going to have to defer to people a lot smarter than me. I'll look at Mr. Williams or Mr. Douglas. I mean, obviously, we, there is a, Mr. Williams, do you want to come forward and take a stab at this? Chris Williams is our legal counsel with Williams Campo, who represented us and assisted in the drafting of the TIF redevelopment plan and the TIF contract. He does these contracts all over the metropolitan area.
I think the short answer is, is it something we could look at? I don't know if we could develop a workable formula or not. Haven't done that before. Probably the simplest way to deal with it is to look at, I believe in the agreement, I think the point at which the city begins to share in the profits is above 14%. Usually what happens is you come in, I don't remember the numbers because it's been several years now, but when they originally come in, they have a projected return on investment, maybe it's 12%. They may make more than that, they may make less than that. And in the profit sharing, if you want to call it that, the public participation provision, we usually provide a little bit of a cushion, let's say usually does, because, you know, if things go well, we're okay with that. We just don't want them to make too much. And I understand Councilmember Fowler's point, and I think one of the ways we could look at that is perhaps that 14% should be a lower number. And, you know, that would take some analysis by people smarter than me, me and Mr. Johnson.
Okay, so basically, by lines we said-
We could look at that.
It is something that could be looked at.
They'll have to take a look at, yeah, they have to take a look at and see if it's doable or not. Okay, you've heard the motion? You've had a second? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Amendment.
Let's roll call this amendment.
Councilman Lauer?
Aye.
Councilman Reed?
No.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Shaver?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Solan?
Aye.
Carried with a 5-1 vote.
Okay, so we need to start working on seeing if it's doable, and how we go about doing it. Okay, so you've, now before you is the initial motion as amended, as amended.
And, Your Honor, I just want to point out, it's had a couple of amendments, one involving a CID component and then this latest amendment.
That's there with property share. Okay, let's have a roll call.
Councilman Reed?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Can I make a couple comments?
Sure.
Before we roll call. One is, you know, we haven't talked about, I guess in my mind, I wanted to make it clear, at least for myself, that we're not changing our policy of backing bonds for commercial development. We are making an exception for this economic situation that we're into. People may disagree with me, but in my mind, I don't want to get in the position where independence in Kansas City as a policy, absolutely not. And I want to be crystal clear, at least in my position on that. Two, a couple points in terms of reducing risk. One is, we are in first position ahead of the bank on these bonds. So that is certainly an incentive to take these bonds out. Two, the first bond issue had a ratio of 1.5. That, from what we, little we know at this point, funding seems to be looking good on that. I would think there will be some excess funds there in terms of sales tax that are committed, that those funds would be available to be a backstop for the second bond issue. I feel much better with the stores, the strength of the stores, supporting bond issue one than I do with bond issue two here, if I can use the terms issue one and two. So I think that is some added, some added reduced risk to this. This is a tough issue, I guess in my mind, I can get on either side of this issue. I certainly don't want to stop the momentum. I think this is important to the MIP. In my mind, the number one priority the city has to have is the MIP. So I'm willing to stretch some things that I normally would not in agreeing to. So when I weigh all of these, I will support it. It is reluctant, and I stood in the corner and argued with myself after a meeting with RED today.
Who won?
You don't win very well at those, that's my point. So I will be supporting it, but I think, in my mind, we'll make it very clear, this is not a normal practice, in my mind, the City of Blue Springs. And it's only because of the exceptional economic condition that we're into and lack of funding.
Okay. Any other comments? Let's roll call.
Councilman Reed?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
No.
Councilman Shaver?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Solan?
No.
Councilman Lauer?
Aye.
Carried with a 4-2 vote.
Okay, we got through that. And we didn't stay until midnight to get it done either. Okay, next is mayoral announcements. I have two. One is, election file enclosed today at 5:00 p.m. for the April 6, 2010 municipal elections. And the slate, as of 5 o'clock, in District 1, we have a newcomer, Dale Carter, and his opponent will be Planning Commissioner James May. In District 2, we have the incumbent councilman, Sissy Reed, and her opponent will be Public Safety Citizens Advisory Board Chair, Chris Levesey. In District 3, we have two newcomers. We have Grant Byerman and Michael Freeman. So we know that we will have, at a minimum, two new council members after the April 6 election. Secondly, I want to remind not only council members, staff, and those in the audience and those that might be watching, that we need to continue to pray for the people in Haiti. They've experienced a tremendous hardship when you had the tragic earthquake that hit. Many of them are in dire need of food, water, medical care, shelter, all the things that we don't have any conceptual idea of what they're going through. So not only should we pray for them, but we should also look down and see about sharing some of our bounty in this land of plenty. So let's always just keep them in our thoughts and prayers. Don't have any forms for visitors, so I would accept the motion to adjourn. Is there a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no? We adjourn.